Good evening, folks. I'd like to call to order the August 3, 2020 Harwich Board's Electments Meeting. We started the meeting at 6:00, then went into executive session in which we discussed four items. First item was purchase and exchange or lease of or value of real estate. If the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiation position of the body. Second item was contact negotiations with the Finance Director and Police Chief. Third was discussion about bargaining position with a couple, and the second two were both bargaining positions with a couple of unions. Moving into our, we then exited our executive session, we're now moving in open session, and let me just read to you our process because, as you know, we're still locked down in town halls so that members from the public are joining us on go-to-meeting. If you wish to join us, our go-to-meeting number is (256) 744-605, or you can call using your phone at (408) 650-3123. The access code is (256) 744-605. If you are on the web, you can also get this information from the agenda. With that, I'd like to open meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Let's end with, well, I guess Joel's left now, so.
Megan.
We'll start then with old business, and we'll come back to the COVID-19 updates.
I think he wanted to.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Requested that we just have Megan and Cindy do those two items.
Okay. Megan, I'll turn it over to you so you can do the COVID, and then we'll ask Cindy to comment. Oh, there you are, Megan. I think you have to unmute yourself.
I'm muted now, but I can hear myself.
Okay.
We can hear you.
Is that, oh, I have an echo.
Yeah.
So I'm sure everybody.
We don't hear, we don't hear your echo here.
If Jamie's in the room, I'm sure she is. There it is. Okay, better now. Okay, thank you, Jamie. The numbers increased by one since update was put in your packet, so now we have 138 cases in Harwich. We had one additional case just today. We are still following six active cases, and of the 137, we've had 24 fatalities changed, and the 71 at Wingate also has not changed. We did get a report of two healthcare workers at the Rosewood Manor that tested positive. They were asymptomatic. All the residents were tested all negative, and those two healthcare workers are back, able to go back to work because their isolation period has finished. Cases are starting to go up again in Massachusetts. We had a 200 and a 300 case count days in the last week. Fatalities are still low, which is what we're most concerned with, and our hospitalization rates are also very low. So those are very good indicators that we're. And we believe it is from gatherings happening. People have missed gathering with each other for the last few months, and with the good weather, people are, people are doing that again. And I just want to remind everyone, it's safer if you gather outside rather than inside of a house. The, the cases that we have that we're following now are in the younger age demographic, under the age of 30. So we're seeing positives in that age range, which thankfully don't show a whole lot of long-term effects of fatalities or hospitalizations, but it does spread to family members and businesses, and it impacts businesses quite a bit. With one positive case in a business, it requires the business to close down for 24 hours. So that these gatherings are affecting numbers, and I do fear that if the numbers continue to rise, that we may be looking at a step backwards in our phased reopening plan. So everyone needs to do their, their best at social distancing and wearing their facial coverings when they're out in public, or if they are around other people outside their household and they're at a gathering, that's, it's really important to do that. Our COVID enforcement or COVID compliance inspector this week has visited another 10 or 12 establishments, and he's getting a lot of good feedback from the business owners. He hasn't gone up against anyone who has been very angry or upset that he attended their business. He's, he's doing the educational approach, and it's been very received, it's been received very well. We are holding a clinic test, a testing clinic tomorrow at the community center, the north side parking lot. That's the parking lot on the rec side of the building, the right side of the building, if you're looking at it. Originally, we had thought we would need the inside of the building because of the heat. It is still going to be hot, and it is still going to be tropical storm, force winds, but we've come up with an alternative plan. So we are holding a clinic in conjunction with Cape Cod Healthcare, and Hyannis Fire is part of the Barnstable County Rapid Response Team, and they have organized this clinic, and we're offering it to food service workers in Harwich, Dennis, Brewster, Chatham, there's a couple from Orleans, and Wellfleet. These towns have had an impact in their restaurant business industry where they've seen some positive cases. So the best thing we can do is to test the other workers to make sure that it hasn't spread any further so we can control the spread as best we can. That clinic is not open to the public. You would have had to have registered already for that clinic. We are at full capacity, so we are not able to take walk-ins. We do see that there's a demand for testing, and we'll, we'll discuss that as health agents across the Cape in the coming weeks. It's an important piece of the surveillance that we're doing and getting people tested at a free clinic or a community clinic where they don't have to go through their doctor seems to be the way that this younger crowd prefers. We do have over 200 people coming to that clinic, and the fire departments that are participating through Cape Cod Healthcare and Hyannis Fire are going to be using their ambulances as testing sites, so people will be able to get out of the weather and be safe from contaminating the building or anything like that. So we're, we're taking some, some precautions, not allowing the testing subjects to come through the building. Any questions?
Thank you, Megan. Is there any tying with all this regarding the potential tropical storm this week in terms of emergency?
Sure. Barnstable County Emergency Management is holding daily calls every morning. They're, they're having a Barnstable County Regional Preparedness Committee. So every town on the Cape has been calling in, so I'm sure, because obviously I'm a little, little busy with the COVID stuff, but I believe Kevin Concedine and probably Chief LeBlanc have been on those calls to find out what's going on with it. It's not going to be hurricane like we thought it was. We should have some strong winds and some humid day, and then the rains will come in after, after dinnertime.
Okay. Any, any other comments, questions? Thanks again, Megan. We'll move next to Cindy Williams of the chamber.
I just wanted to, once again, thank everyone for continuing to keep and try keeping our community safe. Megan, thank you so much. Megan and I are on automatic speed dial with one another, so I appreciate everything she's doing, and it's helped a lot. Speaking with the retailers the last week or so, having great numbers here, many are showing an increase over last year's numbers and similar to stroll nights, so that's good news for the retail side of businesses. The restaurants continue to move ahead. As I've mentioned before, they're all doing what they can to survive and keep business going. As we all know, many have jumped on with the outdoor tents, thanks to all of your approval on getting that process through, again, keeping the takeout going. The biggest thing, I think, is, and I'd like to stress that just everyone, it's not a regular season that we're having. We're in a pandemic, and these restaurants are doing everything they can. They're following all the new protocols. There's so many things that have been thrown at them, many of these restaurants that have been in business for decades. I just would like to stress that, you know, sometimes there's a hiccup, and it may not be what you're used to, but please show respect for the workers, the staff, and the owners of these establishments. They're doing everything they can to keep everyone safe and serve their valued customers. They're so excited to have everyone there, but again, please, just a little respect would be great. And then the big thing Megan didn't touch on, August 1 started a travel order. The one sector that's being affected by this is the hotels and short-term rentals. So they're really the ones that are notifying the biz, the customers and guests ahead of time, reaching out to them. So if they're not coming from one of the low-risk states, they are being notified, what they can do, what they can't do prior to coming here. So been in touch with a lot of those businesses over the weekend, along with some guidance from Megan. And then the big thing was, it's businesses in waves this weekend. Sunday was the busiest. I actually had a line here for beach stickers, so, but everyone was from our low-risk states, so glad to report that. And just wanted to say thank you to the businesses for practicing safety and responsibility. We're looking at getting through the summer season, but we're also looking ahead to the fall and, yes, even the holidays, seeing what we can do and coming up with some new ideas to extend that business for them. So that's our update for tonight. Questions?
Questions or comments for Cindy? It's great to hear the business is starting to pick up a little. Thank you, Cindy.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Moving on then to old business, the first item on our, is discussion, excuse me, possible vote, ranking of town administrator candidates, possible offering of position in formation of a contract negotiation team. We'll start at the beginning, let me just remind that folks that we, actually some months ago now, because of the pandemic is, is dragging on a little bit, formed a search committee for looking at the town administrator candidates. They screened and came to us as four candidates, which we interviewed last Monday. I then sent to each of my fellow selectmen short form, asking each of us to score the candidates from one till, one to five, five being the highest score, one being the lowest. Those, the scores that were. Make sure everything was done in an open meeting. I've gotten those scores back latest afternoon from Bob, and what I'd like to do now is, is read the outcome of our, of our scoring, if that's okay with my rest of you. And just for, for math's sake, you know, five was the best, so if someone scored the top on, I chose to have the top score of 25. The first candidate was Ken Gray, doing the alphabet order. He ended with 12 points, if you will. Tom Greeno ended with seven. Joe Powers, 19. Kathy Vieros, if I'm pronouncing that right, ended with 15. And so that's a result of the scoring. And opening the floor up now for discussion, or nomination, whichever the druthers are.
I'd nominate Kathy Ann Viveros.
Is there a second?
I'd second that.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll, I'll take a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm a aye, so three opposed, two for. The other thing that I'm sure you're all aware of is, is to offer this position, we need a, four out of five of us to vote in the affirmative. Does anyone wish to make another nomination?
I would nominate Joe Powers.
Second.
Any discussion? Well, we'll take a vote again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're at a standstill. I hate to have this drag on, is any other suggestions on how we move forward on this?
Well, before we actually went out to put out advertising, asking for applicants, and I'm not exactly sure if it was before we had the first meeting of the search committee, I think it was about the time when we had decided we were going to hire a search company, but then it was looking like the world was collapsing on us, and we wouldn't, didn't want to spend that much money. There was a suggestion that made that, that probably this, possibly this wasn't the best time to be out recruiting a new town administrator, and that offering a interim, a contract for an interim town administrator to our assistant town administrator for a year would be a possible way to do it, and I would suggest that that is something that could be done now.
I, I would, the reservation I have there is that it detracts from the process, and it detracts from the individual. You can always review these candidates once they're hired at the end of a year, and if the board is unsatisfied, you can obviously not renew the contract, so, or part ways, I should say, not renew the contract. So the same opportunity exists to do what Ed is suggesting as we move forward. I think it is, I mean, I can't imagine the people of this town aren't going to be rather shocked that we appoint four, five, excuse me, what were very competent and capable people to serve on the, on the committee. They did a lot of work to get to where they did. I think we all have given our thoughts on the candidates, and I think it would really be a shame if we did not appoint someone tonight.
Don, here's your comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to amplify on what Stephen said, and I also have a question after this. We didn't just appoint five people, and it wasn't, it wasn't brought to us as a proposed bunch of people. Each of us had our own personal representative on that committee. And I understand that, you know, maybe we didn't go through the search committee, I mean, the search firm, which is, by the way, where we got the inclination, we're, we wanted to see all the resumes, because most of these firms also represent people as headhunters. And they have a tendency to goaltend when they present, and I've seen that personally. In, in order for us to be able to ascertain that, the only way we could do that is if we looked at the resumes, but we, I mean, jeez, we've gone 10 months, if you count the fact that Chris pretty much mailed it in in October, he just stopped coming to various meetings. We've gone through 10 months, we got a town meeting coming up in two months, and I totally agree with Stephen, and I've, I've gotten hammered in the press at times over this, but I don't have a problem with somebody being dismissed if they're not living up to the criteria or the level that you want them to. And in point of fact, with the prior town administrator, I gave an 80 and then a 29 because it was a big falloff and there was some big fibs that were made. If we want to stand up to the plate, you could always remove somebody, but I just don't get it that we all have our own individual representatives on a committee and we're actually disagreeing with their outcome.
Michael?
I'm not sure that's true, Don. Each of us picked our own person in conjunction with the search committee, and if you go back and read the, if you go back and read all of the minutes or videos, because all the minutes aren't done, we all said that we would have a hand in the interview, in, in that process and be able to review, and I found the date and time of the clip where you agreed with me that we would all review the application.
Not on that. With the company, yes, not with a committee.
Well, the, the committee was hired in conjunction to, to work with the search firm, so that conversation didn't change until the 24th hour. So with that said, it's kind of irrelevant to me what they brought forward. The disagreement at hand now is not what they brought forward, it's what your view is versus what my view is versus what Stephen's view is versus Ed and Larry. So it's irrelevant what the search committee did. They brought us four great applicants. I think we all agree on that. So why are we talking about what the search committee did rather than the disagreement in the people? So are we, I mean, either way here, unless somebody was super, super close on their pick, then we're at a standstill, and that's what the process is, is four votes to confirm on a, on a town administrator. And I would agree with Ed, maybe, but I would entertain, and I, and I do recall that conversation, and Ed had offered that before. I still think we did a disservice despite what some social media sites may say, despite what you may say. I still think we did the town a disservice by not hiring a search firm and by going the extra mile to pick the most important person that this town, that, that we are going to hire for this town.
You can package it any way you want to, but.
This is, this is the disservice because I'm not agreeing with you, Don? Is that, is that your form of government?
No. When you put yourself above what the town actually needs right now, yes.
What the town actually needs.
Well.
And I'm tired of hearing this social media stuff because they're voters, voters.
Okay, this, this.
See a text that we take on social media from your friend Sandra? I don't have to call him anything except for what it is.
Let's, let's move on. I, I take Ed's point. Where I come on this, what I'd argue for is, you know, for Joel, before a, a one-year contract that allows us to review that, gets the same spot that you're talking about, but just move the interim from the title and allow him to do his job for one year. Because I think he's a good, a good.
I think he's an excellent candidate, so obviously I do.
But we are, as Michael says, we're at a standstill now, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping we don't drag this on longer, is my, is my hope, because I think that doesn't do the town any service at this point.
Yeah. I've been in office now, this is the third, third town administrator hiring that I participated At that exact time after we had finished the interviews, and I allowed myself to be talked into, and I don't think we did well. Again, the next hiring, luckily, I wasn't, I asked for the time to do the review that we've had this time, and was sort of denied it, and so I abstained, but because I was, there were four other people that the hiring went through. But in this case, I did, you know, use the time and did a lot of review, and, you know, I'm, would, you know, use the time and to become convinced, I'd really, rather than being congealed into voting for somebody who I don't think is as qualified as the person that I do, I just don't want to do that again, because that's, the history of those two hirings has not turned out well for the town.
So what shall we do?
I'm looking for some ideas going forward.
No, I think, you know.
I don't want to start at zero.
You offer a contract for a year for, to continue Mr. Powers in the interim? That contract would only take three votes to put into effect.
Let me ask a question then. Yeah, I'd rather have a full contract for a year, I stated that. How do we handle if that's forward? You know, our front office is short, and assistant town administrator, how do we address that issue?
Well, that's.
We can only rely on Bob Lawton to help out.
Well.
Showtime, and that's not, we're still, we, how do we cover that?
You know, again, I mean, I think it's a pretty clear indication to the people of the town that, you know, we're a little off our track here. The biggest problem we have is the selectmen, it's not the town administrator. So that's where the problem is, and I think we all need to face up to that. So, you know, if I was sitting out there tonight, I'd be like, oh my God, what are these, what are these guys doing? You know?
Michael?
I, I couldn't agree with you more, Stephen. I think the big part of the problem is the selectmen, and, and part of the problem is how long we've taken to get to this point. That's one. Two, you're talking to different people than I'm talking to, or talking to different people than Larry and Ed and Don. There are just as many people for your candidate as just as many people for my candidate.
Michael, I'm not saying, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but I, I'm not, I'm not saying I have the most people or anything like that. You know, I was elected, you were elected. I've hired a lot of people in my career, done a lot of, you know, work looking into people's backgrounds, their ability, what they can do, and I quite frankly came down of my own volition, not of urging from voters in the town, of all the experience I have in looking at those candidates, and, 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 you know, I, I think that Kathy was running a second to me, but based on all of my knowledge and all the people I've ever hired, Joe had the skill sets we needed. That's why I'm here. I mean, it's not because anybody, you know, urged me to, to support him.
Right. And I'm not, I'm not questioning your vote, because your vote's your vote, and mine is mine. I'm not by any means trying to do that. What I'm saying is, we're not the only town that's going through this. I mean, Wellfleet, they were not unanimous, and then they debated for quite some time and made a compromise to pick somebody. So this isn't new. Province Town didn't find anyone, so now they've hired an interim for a year while they go back out to search and find the right person. So this isn't unique that we don't agree, and I, and I could go through my list of why I think Kathy is better than Joe, and I'm sure you could go through your list. And I'm not willing to compromise on that either. And Larry, to answer your question, we could, we could hire a, or go out and hire a town administrator, an interim town administrator for a year, and put Joe back in as assistant town administrator, and then go back out and do a search. town administrator, and then go back out and do a search, which, you know, we extended this for three terms, I think to Don's point on how long Joe's been in that seat. We, we did that. We put him in for three different sections. Sign up for that, but we could end that and put him back in as interim, as assistant town administrator. And I didn't support bringing in a part-time person for the assistant town administrator's job, Bob, Bob Lawton in the beginning, so we could fill that position temporarily, if we had to fill that position temporarily. We have options, but it's not...
We do. And you're right, we each have our own vote, in my mind. Joel has shown himself to be very competent in the past year he's been here through all the tornado, or the, not tornado, but after that, but the pandemic and the budget cuss we're going through now. And so, that's what, that's what I think is very positive. So I, Steve?
Well, it's clear we're at an impasse, and, you know, we're, we're not going to get a vote of four, which is a great disappointment. However, I move that we offer Joe the position for as an interim town administrator. You know, I'm, I'm sure he may take it, you know, the wrong way. I don't want him to, but I move that we do that.
I'll second it.
Is there a second? Any other, we got a second? Any other discussion?
I just, I just want to ask, does that preclude us from putting in for the position in the future again?
No.
No. I wouldn't, don't think that would be, I don't think we could do that if we wanted.
And, and I would add to that, that we have to look at the compensation to make sure that he's compensated correctly.
Right. And my only, to get back to my point, I guess, Michael, you rebuzzed me a little bit, but I still think we need to worry about how we support that in terms of another position there, wherever we title it.
Yeah.
So we're not, we, we come up to, it's an important position, not only town administrator, but the administration in general.
It is.
And I'm not sure you rebutted me at all, Michael, but you made another point. Go ahead.
So I assume with that motion and with that, that we would negotiate, we would all come back and negotiate a salary? Because I also don't believe Joe should continue to sit in the top seat for, for assistant town administrator's pay. That's number one. Number two, what are we going to do for valuation as to the last evaluation that we did on Joe? That blew up because we couldn't do it because he was an acting town administrator. Are we going to give that any thought, or are we just going to sign up for a year and see how it goes?
What, my, this is an eye cop out, but it is. Because what I'd like to suggest is, is that we have a two, as I said, two-man committee on this, and Michael, I'd like you and I to talk about, go through the contract to us and, and bring back to the rest of the board how we're going to structure this to go forward on the salary and so on, and evaluation. Because I think that's better to work out in some discussion. Steve, you know, you're shaking your head, no?
No, 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 no. I think we should need to move ahead.
Well, we're going to move ahead on the motion. I'm just saying the follow-up to that is how we structure it. Michael, you work with me on that?
Be happy to.
Okay. We have a motion then to, to pursue with a one-year contract with Joel's interim, with a second. No other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, so it's...
Abstained.
An abstain. So it's passed, and we will, we will forward, and what, Michael and I will report back to you guys in, in a short time on, on the next steps. Don, you want to grab, or is, we bring Joe back in? We're waiting to talk about Embers Pizza, is what we're about now.
So, guys, see, if by happenstance your computer goes down and you ask them to print out a paper copy, this is what you get. So don't do it. God, I hope I get my computer back by Friday.
Jamie, we'll be going in a second again. I don't know if anyone's watching, let me take this moment, and Jamie just walked out to get some water, but so I can thank her because I won't be, she can't hear me, so I guess... But Jamie's really been, I see, Jamie, I wanted to thank you and, as part of the meeting, because you're holding down, I only take, and I wanted to thank Scott Tuzel for doing such a great job getting us going in the, in the past, and he really bailed us out of the time. And Jamie's now picking that up and not, I gather, not only doing our meeting, but you're covering a couple other meetings going on at the...
We've been covering every single meeting. Every single meeting that the town of Harwich has had since March 14.
So when we're here old and gray, you'll be our official historian.
Yeah. So, so one of the things that happened over the last week, because I wanted to review the, the interviews, I actually looked at one of our tapes. I've never done that before. And I, one of the things I did notice is how badly soft-spoken I am, and so I'm going to make, I'm going to make a significant effort to be close to the mic and to speak with some force so people will, will be heard. And, you know, I feel it's important to wear masks in these days, but, so that hinders me somewhat, but I think I'm pushing to come through. On Friday, on the governor's briefing, I, he did a thing at, towards the end of it, he was asked a question, and I was never so proud of, of a governor of mine as he was talking about the outbursts that had been happening, and it all seemed to happen at social occasions, and how people were being, you know, sort of put out that they couldn't do those things. And he went on and discussed about how all of the medical staff has been put out in the last month trying to get us to recover, and for people to then say, well, I don't have to do that because it's putting me, putting me off of my enjoyment. I mean, he just took his, took the bully in a way that I had never seen done so tastefully.
Okay. You recommend not...
I think we should reveal it first. I don't think it's appropriate to be read on the record.
Okay. Joel, the next item then, we did, to report back, we did have a long discussion about the, about the position, and, and hopefully you accept a, your contract, continue as interim town administrator at the moment.
Sure. Is that a question you'd look me to answer right now, or...
No.
No.
Just so we...
Sure, thank you.
As you know, you sat out for a while, it was a long discussion, but...
I appreciate the update.
Old Business B is a recommendation, your recommendation for the Embers Pizza?
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have it in the pack, but Mr. Chairman, I did receive, when I was in my office, and I did go on my email and found two emails, one related to this matter, and then one related to another matter. They came in after our meeting while I was active in this board meeting. If you're discussing the Embers decision, then there is a document that should be going around to all of you that was received this evening from the attorney for the licensee.
We did receive that email, Joe.
Oh, you did get it, okay.
We did get the email, yeah.
So you have to have that read into the record. So if you want, Mr. Chairman, I can either walk through my decision-making process or allow you to read that into the record and respond to that, whichever you prefer.
Larry, if I may?
You're going to read that, you're going to read it?
No, I am absolutely not going to read it.
It's a long, it's a long email, folks.
I would, I would suggest that we let Joe go through what his decision-making was, and I find that this email delivered to us at 7:32, but written by Attorney Tomlinson at 6:03 PM, delivered into our email box, is completely inappropriate. He also, I did scan it, he also refers to this as a public hearing. This is not a public hearing. This is a public meeting, and you as the chair gets to decide who speaks and who doesn't. But I would, I would vote against reading this into the record, and if, if this, if said restaurant and said attorney wants to appeal a decision, if we make one tonight, I'm sure that that's a process that they can go through.
Further stated, thank you, Michael, for that. Further stated, we voted to, to turn this over to Joel to handle, and along those lines, I would continue to leave it in Joel's hands. And so, Joel, I'd ask your, your summary of your, of your position.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and thank you, Selectman McCaskill, because you're absolutely right, the, and it was a very quick read by me because I, like, I, like you, didn't get it until late this evening. But with this particular document that Attorney Tomlinson is stating, he has the headline of notice of lack of procedural and substantive due process and constitutionally infirm noise bylaw. I would argue for the board that whatever his claims are within his letter can certainly be added to your record if you want, but as was stated earlier, the appeal process is through the Superior Court, as the punishment is relative to the entertainment license, and unlike, as my predecessor stated, as I've stated as well, and as the board knows, the board could have taken action or directed me to take action against the liquor license. And so what I'd like to tell the board, and then by extension the general public, is it's a fairly lengthy recommendation by me, and that's because I took it, not simply that I took it seriously, I have no doubt that my predecessors took their job seriously as well, but it was really to try and tie a number of concepts together as it relates to licensed establishments in Harwich, and whether or not it is simply entertainment or a subset of the liquor license. And so the, the layout that I have there, I recap for you the allegations, the hearing summary which was attached, and the legal standards that were applied. And then I do my statement of findings, as you can see there, and long story short, my findings are that I found that the allegations against the establishment were legitimate and warranted a penalty. And it's the penalty section that, taken by itself, is the largest portion of this. So what I did, and I wrote the decision, and as the hearing officer, and then I shared it with counsel to make sure that it was legally enforceable and that there were no major concerns for the, for the process or for the town. And so I took into consideration the claims of the prior attorney. We weren't told until today that Attorney Kelly is no longer representing them, but you'll see in both Attorney Tomlinson's missive tonight, as well as the materials that I drew upon, there was correspondence sent by Attorney Kelly long after the hearing was adjudicated. If you recall, this was February 27th, right before the cusp of pandemic, and then, you know, trying to get back to some solid footing and get back into the process. He took it upon himself to send a letter in May making suggestions. I took those suggestions into consideration, and I want to draw that out in the recommended disciplinary action. Specifically, let me find it here. Oh, I apologize. Understatement of findings, the last item there, on or above May 14th, 2020, I received correspondence from the licensee's attorney asking for leniency due to the effects of the COVID-19 crisis. With, he also talked about concept of co-mingling, penalty days and co-mingling, or adding on and vacating, and all of those concepts come to bear in this decision here. So if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is read out loud my overall recommendation to the board, and that would be the central point of discussion.
Please.
I recommend the following progressive discipline be rendered against the licensee as follows: that the license suspension for Sunday, July 12, 2020, which was a prior suspension penalty, not having been served, be vacated, and that restriction on entertainment being specifically limited to acoustical performances only on the remaining Sundays in August of 2020 be rescinded, and that the following be instituted instead: that the licensee serve a seven-day suspension of all entertainment, both indoors and outdoors, on successive days during the period to be chosen by the licensee. Work with them and not just hand down an arbitrary set of days. And so I know some in the community might be disappointed that the penalty could be served after Labor Day, but it is still early enough in the shoulder season that I think the penalty will have some, some impact on enforcement. Because in all of the whereas's that are in that, and that was intended to be read eventually if it goes through another process by court, that there was a mindset of, these are not the first violations, these are not the first penalties within the last year, that the regulations, because I know there was discussion by the board before about, could we have some level of discipline? And what I would argue is that we already do. You folks might know better than I, because this is my first real, you know, exposure to the liquor license regulations, but the liquor license regulations that you amended as recently as 2011 talk specifically to a licensed establishment and any other license they have impacts upon their liquor license. So I would argue that while it may seem somewhat harsh to the licensee, I would argue that there were some in the community that could argue that it was lenient, and what I was trying to do is strike a balance to make sure that we could render a decision and a penalty that would stand. And I would also, I'd let the board know that I wrote it in such a way that if the board were willing to consider any reduction in sentence, I could make recommendations to that as well. It was built so that you have options to, to go beyond if you wanted to, or to go within it. And ultimately, this board is the licensing authority, is the one to make the final decision. But it's as lengthy as it is because I took a lot of things into consideration, you know, entertainment and noise in Harwich, which, as we all know, is not an easy thing to decipher or deal with. But having said that, I think the facts were clear, and that's why I stand by the recommendation I've made.
Joel, there were, I think, several violations. Does this roll all of them into one? So this will complete the process, at least as of today?
Correct. For this establishment, I'm not aware of any other outstanding noise violations that are alleged against this establishment, and to my way of thinking, it brings everything up to date. So the decisions that were rendered by my predecessor that were in play, those were vacated if you accept the recommendation. That was a request of the licensee's attorney at the time, as well as the time when they serve it, that they have some, some level of input. But if you support the recommendation or some subset of it, it, to my mind, brings everything to, to closure as it relates to noise violations.
If we support your recommendation, does that end it? Do they can appeal it and carry this on?
Regardless of what the board does, they, whether you accept my recommendation, reduce it, or expand it, they can appeal it to Superior Court. And so my, my understanding of that process, not being an attorney, is that they would probably seek an injunction from Superior Court to stay the decision until their appeal can be heard. So the likelihood that if they appeal, that it would be served before September 14 is slim. Correct.
Ed?
Yeah. Read, read over the document that Mr. Powers just referenced, and it's quite thorough. There's, I think, all the bases. And with that, I'd like to move that we approve of the recommended progressive discipline recommendations be approved by the licensing authority.
Which is us.
Which is us. That is outlined in the memo dated August 3, 2020.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Is that?
I'm an aye.
You're an aye?
I'm an aye.
Okay. It's unanimous, Joel, so thank you for the hard work on that.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. And for what it's worth, I will add Attorney Tomlinson's material to our records.
Okay. And Joel, just for, to, to state the obvious, when you say to our records, it'll become part of the packet, then?
So we'll add it to our file, so that if we're called into Superior Court, I'll have our attorney be aware of the materials that Attorney Tomlinson presented to the town.
Okay. Does that mean it's in our minutes sense, so if anyone wants to read it, or?
Yeah, it can be, because it's been added to the record.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the, your recommendations on perks.
So I'm just looking, Mr. Chairman, to see who's on. I know Attorney McDonald, you're representing perks for their, for their transfer, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Powers.
And I see Mr. Powell is on, and hopefully, Mr. Powell, you've received a copy of the decision.
Now we can see you.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what you'll notice is same format, same process and procedure as it relates to the hearing held on June 30th, 2020, regarding alleged violations against perks. There's the allegations, the summary, the standards that were applied, the statement of findings, and the recommended disciplinary action. And so therefore, I recommend that the following discipline be rendered against the licensee as follows: that the licensee serve a one-day suspension of all entertainment, both indoors and outdoors. It should be noted that they presently do not have indoor entertainment, but with our recommendations, on a day to be chosen by the licensee to be served prior to Monday, September 14, 2020.
Any discussion? Now, entertain a motion. Michael?
I move that we approve the interim town administrator's recommendation on Go Industries' DBA perks disciplinary hearing held on June 30, 2020, as presented.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Do any of you, I guess, McDonald or Dave, do you have a comment?
Yeah, the, the only comment I'd like to make is, make is, we do disagree, unfortunately, and our disagreement's based upon the measurement of 150 feet, that it wasn't from the boundary line, as written in the music permits, that the legal standard used in the decision was the boundary, and not the language written in the music permit stating that it's from the boundary line or whichever's further. So he actually took the source of amplification. I don't know that we're gonna appeal or not, but I just wanted to comment that I just disagree with the distance that the officer was within 150 feet that night.
Okay. We'll take your disagreement. Is there, no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you, Joel, and thanks for attending and making your comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next on the agenda is the annual town meeting topics, and we have several items on this, and I'll turn it over, I guess, to Steve and Don and Dana. First is on the appropriation of the stabilization fund?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is desire expressed by the Finance Committee to reserve a spot on the warrant to address the possible use of stabilization funds as we deal with the budget crisis we're in. There has not been a specific number tagged with that. I believe, and Dana can correct me if I'm, if I'm representing this wrong, that the whole intent that he has behind this is to assure that we have some ability to address the use of the stabilization funds, and he thought the best way to do that would be through the warrant. My understanding is that the, there is legislation that has been passed in the House and the Senate and signed by the governor relative to the situation we find ourselves in that does allow us, as a select board, to utilize the stabilization funds without a vote. So I just put that out there, and I believe it was Carol, Paula, that, that actually informed us of that capability. And I could stand corrected again if Carol thinks I'm wrong on that. So that's the first thing that we needed to discuss, and I know Don has some thoughts on it as well, and Dana may want to chime in.
And thank you, Carol. I know you gave us documentation to back up what Steve said, so thank you for that. Ed?
Well, yeah, could, could Carol tell us what, what it was the legislation did?
Hi, good evening. So the legislation allows for the Board of Selectmen to vote at one of their meetings to utilize stabilization funds to fund any deficit shortfalls, or to use it as you choose to use it, instead of having to go to a town meeting for that vote.
Ed, go ahead.
So if I, if I understand, you, you probably wouldn't know if you're having a shortfall until towards the end of the year. So would it allow you to then?
I mean, I'm sorry, I, I probably didn't say that appropriately. If you, you know, so they, so it's in Bulletin 2020-8, and I can provide that for you. I can also read a portion of that for you if you would like, if you're interested in that, just so that you have. So on Bulletin 2020-8, it is under item stabilization funds, item two, stabilization funds, and then item number B. And it's the appropriation from stabilization funds or special funds established by a special act. It provides a local option for a city, town, or district for FY21 to appropriate funds for many stabilization fund created under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, or a special fund established by a special law for any lawful purpose, notwithstanding the specified purpose of the fund. Therefore, the existing fund balance of a special-purpose stabilization fund can be appropriated for expenses other than for the purpose for which the fund was originally established. The option is exercised in a town with a town meeting form of government by a two-thirds vote of its select board, or a selectman or town council, and then it goes on to a city and how it's voted in the city. Would you like me to read all of this?
No.
No. I think that covers it, Carol, thank you.
So if, if, to identify how this would play out, presumably, a town meeting is going to approve an appropriation, the budget, and after that, if the selectmen find it's not covering anything, they then can approve an appropriation out of the stabilization fund? Or do they do it at the same time the budget is passed? Or do they do it before the budget's passed? I mean, you know, it's?
I don't, I don't think it's any of those things. I think what they're, I think what they're saying is, you have that ability available to you.
Okay.
When and if you need it.
Okay.
Carol, am I incorrect in my interpretation?
I agree. I agree with you, Stephen.
Okay, so.
If I read of it.
So, so then presumably, if, you know, you pass a budget, and it's a tight budget, and you know it's a tight budget, and you get to the end of the year, and you're coming up short, at, at that time, because it was still for the budget of FY21, you could approve an appropriation to make it through, without having to go through late May drastic cuts of services and personnel to balance the budget. Okay.
Don, what's on that and the stabilization?
Yeah. It's been tough, because we can't say we represent the Board of Selectmen, because we don't. We're a subcommittee, but more than once said that I don't think it's gonna fly if we use all or most of stabilization for operating, because it takes forever to build it up, and if we burn it off in a year, and it turns out next year's even worse, we've got no fallback plan. So I would be, I've said it there, I'll say it here, I'd be extremely cautious about anything we take out of that. It shouldn't be used to prop up anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, and I think, I don't think there was an intent, and Dana can certainly speak for the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee wasn't looking to drain the stabilization fund. They just, they want, just want to make sure we have a tool available to us, that's all.
Dana?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's correct. We, we never once talked about anything that would take up the money. In fact, we agreed with Steve right up front that we gotta think about next year as well, and money has to be held for next year as well. So we were just looking for a placeholder. We thought an article was much more transparent for the board, rather than them doing it on their own without an article. It does suggest, in the documents that Carol read, that we did not consider anything that town meeting would oppose to, so having it go before town meeting seemed like an appropriate thing to do. And we're hoping that if it comes up, that we're gonna indefinitely postpone it and not use it at all. I see some things going in the right direction to help us that way, but if we're in a situation that something isn't gonna make it, or it's not gonna give, we just want that as a tool, as, as we have said all along, to be able to use it. And if it's not in the warrant, it's not a tool we can use. If it's in the warrant, it's a tool we can use if we need it. That's all.
So I think we're in agreement, this is a very last resort item that we'd ever bring up, then.
Yes.
Right, well, if it isn't in the warrant, we can still use it. It's just that it's probably a less attractive methodology to use, because it's not as transparent.
It's more, yeah, okay. Oh, Michael, the other, or, excuse me, Michael, you first and Ed?
I just would like to get Carol's opinion. I think, as of right now, we'd support the concept of a placeholder, but without a, wouldn't fully support it without the board having a plan to do everything we can do first.
And I think that was Don's point.
Right.
Yeah, and I, I think we're.
So, Carol, I guess my question would be, what are your thoughts on this?
So I think that we need to bring forward to the Board of Selectmen a balanced budget. I, I am absolutely sure that, that we can get there. I don't think you're probably going to like the results and the ramifications of that, but I think we need to bring that forward to you so that you see what kind of services or, you know, even people that may have to be reduced in order to support a balanced budget. And I think you should make your decisions based on what we bring forward. And if you choose to use some of your stabilization funds in order to rectify those budget cuts, then I, I think that you would be well-served to understand what the departments would be faced with, and whether you're willing to accept those reductions.
Okay, Michael?
So you would support putting a placeholder in the, in the warrant, so long as we have those conversations first?
Well, I certainly believe putting a placeholder in the warrant is a very good option for you. I do agree that while the Board of Selectmen maybe have the ability now in FY21 to make those kind of decisions, I think that involving your town meeting is, certainly would bring you a long way in providing information to the public, and really needed information for the public, because I think in this point in time, people are probably disjointed a little bit, maybe they, they aren't able to, to, to actively pursue information, and maybe it's not as readily available as it has been in the past. So I do think this would bring you a long way in being open to the public.
Ed, and then Steve?
And, you know, in, in proposing the budget, we could always make the expenditure out of the stabilization part of the funding sources of the budget, but then that would tie the requirement that the budget pass by a two-thirds vote, because it would require use of stabilization funds. Whereas by having a separate article on the use of the stabilization funds would separate that question alone of whether or not to spend money out of stabilization and make that a standalone question. And, and obviously, in proposing that, if we do, when that article comes up, it will have a certain, specific services, people, positions that would be tied with it, so that question could be put to the voters. You know, do you want to dip into your rainy day fund to keep these services alive for the coming year or not?
Steve?
Yeah, no, I, I don't think that, I don't think there's really any big disagreement here. I, I think that we all feel it should be transparent, we all feel it should be a place mark. The question is, I, I, Don, and Don points this out, is what's the amount we're gonna put on there? And I think we should wait a bit. Let's get the place mark in place. You know, as Ed pointed out, it's, it maybe should stand alone, or, you know, so it's good guidance from you folks, so that I can, and Dana hears it too, obviously. So I think we've got our question answered, Dana, relative to a place mark.
Okay.
I, I would ask you actually vote to put it in, because into the draft warrant, we, we keep looking at the calendar on the Finance Committee side, and Friday, the 21st, is our last meeting before we have to turn everything over to administration to. Complete a warrant as possible, as soon as possible, is just very important to us. You guys, after tonight, have three more Monday nights before you run out of time. So if you want to vote anything, I had two going to print, you get to that point very quickly as well.
Dana, we got it. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we insert into the draft warrant a placeholder article for the use of stabilization funds to fund items removed by 2021 operating budget.
As worded in our agenda, in our, in our packet?
Yeah.
Michael, second that.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And this?
This is capital outlay.
Capital outlay committee?
Yeah, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually defer to Don on this. Don was on the committee that did a lot of work on this, and had a in-depth discussion with Dana on, in our last meeting. So I apologize, Don, but I am gonna throw it under your plate.
Well, thanks for giving me the 30 seconds. The problem with this is we never really discussed the implementation of it. If we're going to the seven-year, I personally don't feel that we need years two through seven right now, because we've already chewed up a.
I'm just hoping someone explains it to me, Don, because I, I don't understand it fully.
Well, the plan, the way it was originally in the charter, up until five or six years ago, I guess it was, no, it actually had to be eight, because I've been here for, this is the fourth. Well, it was turned from a, a capital plan where, literally, it wasn't just our plan, it was a plan for taxpayers to know, you know, what kind of level of borrowing we were looking at. You were only able to enter the tail end of the plan. So if you came this coming year with a project, it would be in year seven, and it would work its way up, for, for planning purposes, for both the town and for the Board of Selectmen. We reverted to what became a capital budget, where every year was a different year, and you could move things around at will. If you said that next year you were planning on doing something, and you didn't want to, you could substitute some. you could substitute something for four years from then, bring it in. That's not possible now. It passed town meeting, it passed the AG's office, and it passed at the ballot box this last June, so we are in a capital plan, but, no, we didn't discuss how to implement that, and, I mean, the question is, do you really want to, at the 11th hour here, three months into a fiscal year, create a seven-year plan with, you know, like, seven weeks left to be able to pull that off? Or do you want to concentrate on the capital plan for this year, and then for the next year, for next year's town meeting, build a seven-year plan that, where you've had some time to think it over, and about where everything belongs?
I guess the question was whether we were obligated or not to do that.
We're not obligated to the seven, when we finally institute a full plan, it will be, but there was no ramp-up, there was no process given about how-
So you're suggesting we actually have, do have a transition?
I would think that we'd be better off, because, like I said, we, we're gonna be winging it, we're gonna do seven years' worth of capital projects in a little more than a month, basically.
Let me ask-
Mr. Chairman?
Dana and Carol and Joe weigh in on this, but Dana?
Yeah, I'm just gonna take the opposite view of Dawn. In the old language that you had on the charter prior to the changes, it said the Board of Selectmen will prepare an articles to be included in the town warrant for a seven-year capital plan and funding for the current year. In the new language that was passed, the same language is there. The Board of Selectmen, according to the charter, will put together a seven-year plan with a funding for the current year. There's no doubt about it, this is just a continuation, that part of the capital outlay process did not change, even though Town, Dawn called it a, the year-to-year kind of plan, we still required a two-thirds vote at town meeting, it was still presented as the adoption of the capital plan. The new language suggests that $50,000 items and less come out, I think that can be done very easily. I think that what you're left with is a very easy plan to deal with. It has seven of the items you've already included in the warrant, in my estimation, only has 16 items in the current year to begin with, which means you're moving a few into another year as an amendment to the plan, but you have a very easy plan to deal with right now that exists, and you're required by the charter to put forward a plan that includes seven years. I don't know what, what this debate is about, but it's certainly not to present the vote as a one-year plan.
Don?
Well, we disagreed in our subcommittee meeting, so I might as well continue. The reason I'm bringing this up is because it is, I disagree entirely, the plan that we had up until this year was malleable, you could change things around, and it did not take a two-thirds vote to move things around, it was a capital budget, next year, something that wasn't even on it could become the number-one priority. If you do what you're suggesting to do, and you create a seven-year plan now and wing it, you are locked in, and it'll take you, in any movement from any year, you're gonna have to have a two-thirds vote for everything from this point forward, so if your five doesn't, doesn't wind up becoming as urgent, and you want to drop that to year seven, and you want to bring something else, it's gonna take a two-thirds vote for every single thing that you're doing.
Do we have a seven-year-
And we waited away for a decade, Dawn. It was not a problem.
Every year was a new year.
But, but that's history in-
No, before that, before that, we went an entire decade with a plan, just like you're describing right now.
Yep, but I think Dana, that's, we had that, now we have the final, has the capital outlay committee weighed in on this seven-year plan? Does anyone, Joe, do you know?
Prior, prior to the vote, they were opposed to, to what was being recommended. Since the vote, we haven't had a chance to meet, and that's why I'd asked for this to be on the agenda tonight. There was never the, so if I could, we, there was never the intention of the town election to precede the town meeting, so I'm just looking for direction from the board, how do you want me to proceed under the new requirements for the capital outlay plan?
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Well, that's, that's the point. Under normal circumstances, we would have passed this capital outlay plan, and then had the vote adopting the new regulations, which would take effect next year. And I think that's what we should do. If we want to say, no, we need to start and create a new plan from scratch, well, we're only allowed, without a two-thirds vote, of adding in the seventh year, so, which would be, in this case, fiscal year 2027, which means that we wouldn't have any capital outlays until 2027, which is ridiculous, you know? And before this was changed, to make it sort of a year-to-year budget tool, rather than a, a planning tool, it was changed because the year-to, year-to-year before that, and for the first, I think, four years that I was on the Board of Selectmen, we had to do this very intricate motion, change, making all the changes, as things moved up a year, back a year, or one thing or another, and it drove Pete Watson crazy, the chairman of the capital outlay committee, and, and he pushed to have it changed, so we could do that, you know, change it year-to-year. This is a reversion, I think it's, it's a good thing to do, and it, and it's a, and it's a pain in the neck to draw up that motion, because you've got to say, item 26 in year three is going to be moved to year four, and year, item four, you know?
Ed, is there consensus to get back, to reg the order, and have the capital budget outlay look at this, and?
For all seven years in six weeks?
No, no, to have this come back for spring of next year, after capital outlay has looked at it, and we go back to normal business. Michael, and then?
So I agree with Dawn, and I did vote to change this, because it was a capital budget instead of planning, but this is a micro version of the capital plan, normally it's on a big piece of paper. A tremendous amount of work went into this.
Yeah.
So a tremendous amount of planning went into this, though we may, we probably all agree that, under the past administrator, they kind of picked and chose where we were going to move things around. But why would we want to throw away the amount of work that the capital outlay committee has done over the last five years to create this plan, instead of just making those motions to change it at town meeting? Because I think now, more than ever, we're in a situation with this pandemic, and not knowing what's going to happen for the next two or three years, based on people's loss of property, loss of money, we're going to be moving things around anyway.
And-
If we use this now, that's locked in for, in perpetuity, you can only add year seven from here on in.
But, and my argument is, in the final years, that we, before we changed it to make it very easy to discuss, we changed things all the time, and we never particularly had a problem. It was just a confusing, complicated step to have to take, but we're going to have to do that anyway, unless we're, are going to say that we're going to commit to putting capital items on seven years out, and without ever moving them, that's the only way you're going to eliminate that need to do the two-thirds switch.
You're gonna need to- We're gonna have to do that, because we, because nothing's concrete for seven years.
And, and the other issue is, you know, if we had not moved our, our town meeting, this would have been approved before the new charter amendment took, took place.
And if we hadn't had the pandemic, we wouldn't be a quarter of the year into our budget.
You know, so, I, you know, I don't see any harm in just leaving the current plan to be passed, and, and letting the capital outlay committee clean it up, and, and, if they need to. I mean, they, they may like the way they've scattered the items around over the next seven years.
Joe, and Michael?
So I would move that we do, I mean, and I don't think I need to make a motion yet, because I think we just need to give Joe some direction.
Any consensus?
But I think that, I, my, my vote would be to leave the plan as it is, give it to capital outlay to clean up, and agree with what Dana has dropped off, he took the $50,000 items out, and he took some leases out, but I think I would give it back to capital outlay to clean up, but I would, I would move to approve the plan that we have and add the seventh year.
And I don't think, you're right, I don't think we need a motion now, but, Joe, does that, does that give you some help?
If there's consensus of the board, that's all I need.
I have, I'm one.
I'm one.
I think, Dawn, are you okay with that, to get it started?
I'm not sure I'll vote for it, but it's, you can try it. I'm just concerned that you don't know what you don't know. We don't have a capital outlay committee that's actually been brought in to look at this, to see exactly whether they do agree with, under the current circumstances of all seven of those years. That hasn't happened yet.
The capital outlay plan committee that we'll bring in is the same capital outlay committee, essentially, that created this plan, so, you know?
Well, I think, Dawn, your point is-
So the count was three, a maybe four, and then Larry hasn't weighed in, just so we can move on.
No, I want to, I'm, I'm part of the consensus on this, because I think it gets us started.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll see where, where it goes.
Moving on to the next item C, draft warrant, I believe Joe has some thoughts on this, at least Larry, maybe Larry will, you know?
Well, I want to turn this to Joe, because Joe's given a lot of work on this and getting it started.
Well, I actually did more than I thought I was going to do, as I mentioned to you, Mr. Chairman, last week, when I'm in an effort to do full grounding for our ever-approaching annual town meeting in September, the draft you have before you was finalized as a draft early this evening. Before I get into the document itself, I'd rather draw your attention to the, of draft warrant articles, excuse me.
Could I just mention one thing?
Sure.
Which jumps out at me off the thing is, is it says, Saturday, September 26, 10:00 a.m., the Montmorey Regional High School Stadium Field.
That's yet to be decided yet.
Correct.
That's draft.
So we're in broken script there, is the word draft, but given how my last draft went, I did want to let people know, and now that that's out there, Tuesday, we have our walkthrough to figure out if we can use the stadium field and how we're going to do it. And when I say we, the chairman of the board, the Finance Committee Chairman, staff that's related to, to the output, I'm not sure that the town clerk's able to join us, but I'll report back to her, but the intent tomorrow is to do a walkthrough to make sure we can do our outdoor town like that.
And then we bring up this, depending on, we'll bring that back to Monday's meeting on the, as an agenda item.
Good.
Joe, go ahead.
It's more importantly manifested on page seven, which is the, the legal notice, that language is in there as a draft. The one pager that I gave you this evening is to just show you presently the number of articles that I have accounted for, and our finance director, and I know the Finance Committee Chair, finance director has updated me on different statements made from staff on rescissions of articles, so they've been taken out. I know that the Finance Committee had some discussions, and I've tried to reflect the net effect of those discussions in this draft. For the board, though, I want you to just see that it's presently at, now up to 45 articles, if the entire warrant as listed there were adopted. There is a multi-family zoning bylaw amendment, which is actually going to be referred officially to you next week, for you to refer it back to the Planning Board to go through its process, but that is expected to come before the annual town meeting in late September, and of course, the language you just talked about with stabilization article. So you can see, working from the bottom up, we have customary articles, we have the petitioned articles that we've already talked about, community preservation articles are in there, they're under, currently doing a rewrite through the CBC Chairman, and really what this was built on is, if you remember the, I believe it was 44 articles that I had shared with the board earlier this summer, that was an effort by Elaine Banta and others to reduce the original warrant of 59 articles to focus more on financial. I would also encourage everyone to please not focus yet on the dollar amounts, because all of that's in play, but if you can see, we have a fairly significant warrant for an unusual type of town meeting. It covers all of the standard things we need to cover, as well as some pressing items that are out there, so really what I just want is the board to take this away with you tonight, I'll continue refining it, and it'll be in the packet for some level of vote and discussion formally next Monday night.
So, does the Finance Committee have this?
No, no one has it yet, I just finished it right before the meeting.
I think-
I will share with the finance director and the finance chair after this meeting.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Dawn?
Thank you.
Would it be pretty clear to talk about the revolving funds at this point? The reason I bring that up is-
Yeah, I would like to, go ahead.
Just philosophically, we have burdened to the point where, I, I can't find a town our size that has over $1 million worth of revolving funds floating around. I am adamantly opposed to pushing the ball down the field even further than we've done it, by starting to talk about, yeah, we can use revolving funds to hire people, too, unless they want to hire their whole department out of them, and then take it offline out of the budget. So as far as I'm concerned, at a minimum, we should be allowing, you know, like, mission creep here, where we start putting more things, and putting a burden on the revolving fund, without consciously thinking about, do we really want to expand them, or do we want to trim them back so that they're more under control? Because nobody at this table can tell me for an absolute fact, over the last couple of years, exactly who over, who was overseeing this. We've got volunteer committee people who are essentially performing a task of appropriating money, in voting expenditures. I don't think anybody ever really meant that to happen, they were thinking that, you know, we're fielding two more teams, so we need more uniforms, this is really getting big.
Yeah. I'd like to discuss that separately, is to bring it back, because that involves, I think, some type of policy in how we're handling revolving funds. I think for this town warrant, we should be concentrating on what the upper limit is, and that's, I-
It's all about is expanding it.
I agree with, on your, philosophically where you're going. Joe, are you, what's your thinking on this? This is a great start, should we start bringing back so-called low-hanging fruit, so we can vote some of these articles next week, and start moving ahead on this?
Yeah, so what you'll, what you'll have by midweek is a more refined version of the 45 articles that I, the other two that I just mentioned, and I would ask the board to, to go through the warrant, and see if there's anything that you think you want to postpone until seven months later.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly.
And Carol, what's your timing, you think, on the working through of balanced budgets, and some options that we should be looking at in that regard?
Well, Joe gave instruction to department heads Wednesday afternoon to bring back, before him by Wednesday at noon time, budget reductions that they could sustain, and, and the ramifications of those reductions, so depending on, you know, Joe's schedule and his time to-
......................................................... Probably-
I'm just saying to give you some-
On Monday.
Through, okay. Michael?
So, some of these, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, I know there was a very confusing meeting where we were voting numbers that didn't quite match the description in the warrant, so have we voted, or are we just gonna start from scratch?
So that, that was my effort, I'm trying to start from scratch, given where we are in the late fall and everything else.
Okay, with that said, I-
Let Michael finish, then we'll go there.
With that said, I know tonight, we, we, we put another article into the warrant, a placeholder, which Dana and I had met and talked over the weekend, and I think he called it article number five, so as we, is, is what he wanted to call the placeholder, he wanted it in position five, which I think was ahead of the budget, or right behind the operating budget, so-
But just before-
Go ahead, Dana.
Just before the, I think appropriately, you should know the answer to that question, if you use the stabilization fund, or if we indefinitely postpone it, you should know that answer prior to voting the budgets.
Okay, so I just, that to Joe, so that as he does it, we don't add another number later.
Is that the proposed stabilization article?
Yes, correct.
Gotcha.
Uh, and then with that said, uh, I know the finance committee has already voted kind of their low-hanging fruit, uh, I think about 20 articles, uh, in a list. I mean, do we want any of these and vote them, or do we want to just start next week?
Let's start next week.
Okay.
Because I haven't, I've had a chance to look at that, this myself, but Ed, I don't think I have it. Is it in the packet?
It's just what they voted. It's customary hiring articles and simple stuff.
Just a very...
Can we?
Just a very quick point, procedure, because we have, in the past, voted, took a variety of votes on a number of our articles, um, I'd just like to make a motion that all previous votes approving articles for the town meeting warrant, uh, for the town meeting of fiscal, uh, 2020, uh, be, uh, reversed or overturned, rescinded.
Yeah.
And that clears it.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? That's a good point, Ed. That will start off. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so I think right now, then, Joe, we'll turn it back to you, and we'll start, uh...
Yep.
Because I do like your, uh, I think, what you said going into this, I do like, uh, starting, uh, small and building up as we go through the warrant articles. We could do some things in that. Carol, getting back to our discussion, I wanted to be sure with, if Joe gets additional information, I think, Wednesday or Thursday, does that give you time to, uh, worry about a balanced budget, or another week would be more appropriate to give you adequate time to do it, you know, do it justice?
Do you, do you mean for your meeting next Monday?
I'm leaving, you're, right. I'm saying, is that too quick for you to do, uh, to do what you have to do and give it justice, or should we delay your, the balanced budget discussion until the following Monday?
I, I, I think the following Monday would be better, just so that we can do some se- second checking, make sure, you know, um, all of our numbers balance, and, um, we've been able to, um, verify all the information. I should be able to have that to you by midweek next week.
Okay.
If, as long as I have it, you know, at a reasonable time.
Good. And Joe, that helps, I think, because then gives some, gives some back and forth in these discussions before we get, before it comes back to us. So we'll plan on that. Thank you, Carol. Is that where we, does that end this discussion, Joe? Are you, uh...
That helps me, yes.
We'll move then on, Steve or Don, thanks for working with the finance committee on the, and Dana, your committee, the subcommittee, I think you guys have had good discussions, and so, uh, that's what we wanted to do. And, uh, and Joe and Carol for helping out. Moving next to public, uh, presentations, actually.
So there is the...
We've already done that.
There is the public comments and announcements.
Anyone for a public comment or announcement? I keep wanting to skip that. Anyone, uh, listening in who wishes to make a comment?
Nope, okay, let's move on.
Okay, next, then we'll move to the, next item on the agenda, Joe, which is, uh...
So, um, Mr. Chairman...
Uh, Michael, you have a...
I just question, are these public hearings, actual public hearings?
Are they?
Just, uh...
Yes, these, these two items, there was public notice given.
Okay.
Okay, so we have to, we have to announce this. Can you read them off as public hearing?
Opening a public hearing. So, we want to open up...
Yes, please.
So I move that we open a public hearing for discussion and possible vote to approve the transfer of seasonal all alcohol liquor license from Go Industries, Inc., DBA Perks, Taylor Powell Manager, to Lucky Labrador, Inc., DBA Taylor Powell Manager, 545 Route 28 in Harwich.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're in public hearing, and, uh, Joe, I'll turn it to you, and, uh, I see Taylor Powells are back in here as well, so...
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, as you see in your packet, you have materials related to, um, the change of, um, move in here, uh, transfer of the license to the new, um, establishment identifi- excuse me, the new, um, manager known as Lucky Labrador Incorporated, doing, doing business as perks, and, um, going solely to Mr. Taylor Powell. Before I go any further, Mr. Chairman, I do want to just state for the record that, um, the board is in receipt of an email, and it includes a document, Mr. Chairman, that I handed to you, um, prior to my return before the board. And I just want to emphasize that, my quick read of that, it's problematic that that document be read into the record, because I don't know if it's going to abridge upon an individual's rights, defamation or anything like that. So I do want to make, uh, the board aware that I handed that to you as chairman, but my recommendation is that it not be read into the record.
Yeah. We'll hold it there. Michael?
Yeah, and I'd just like to add to that. I'd like to, uh, say that if, if the attorney for, or the owners of said restaurant are online and wish to speak, that that's different from the board receiving an email at 3:00 at a 6:30 meeting time.
Yeah.
And I think that the comments and the content of that, um, email from the attorney are way off base, and nothing that we should get involved in. And if they have an appeal and want to challenge our staff, that they're welcome to do that. But I think it's completely inappropriate to, that we would read that into record, and I strongly object.
Agree.
I'm going to follow Joe's recommendations. We'll, we'll settle on that for now.
Agreed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, you can see the packet in front of you. Uh, it's been vetted by staff, and there's no objection to the transfer.
I'll entertain a motion.
Um, if anyone from the public wants to speak, this is the public hearing. Otherwise, I would move to close the public hearing and make a motion immediately.
Second.
Second.
Uh, actually, Larry's going to give them a chance if they want to speak.
I'm going to give them a chance to speak, uh, the attorney and the...
Mr. Chairman, you have a, McDonald representing the, the Powells, as well as, uh, the Powells present.
You wish to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Brett McDonald, for the record, Brett McDonald, an attorney at Nutter McLennan and Fish, with offices in Hyannis and Boston. Uh, I represent the Lucky Labrador. I just want to be clear for the record, what we're seeking here. We're seeking to transfer this license from its existing license holder, Go Industries, in which Mr. Powell is a minority shareholder and the manager of record, uh, to a license in the Lucky Labrador, in which Mr. Powell will be the sole shareholder. So he's going from a minority to a 100% shareholder. This board has previously approved Mr. Powell as the manager of record and as a shareholder in an existing licensee. Uh, we are not proposing any changes to the operations of the premises, the menu, the number of tables and chairs, the hours of operations of the layout. So to summarize, nothing will change operationally. Uh, this is more of a corporate reorganization exercise for Mr. Powell to obtain 100% ownership of the Perks Coffee Shop. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Powell. You, you have any comment?
No.
I guess not, so we'll...
So I move that we close the public...
No, no comment, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that we close the, uh, public hearing and return to the board meeting.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the transfer of seasonal all alcohol liquor license from Go Industries, Inc., DBA Perks, Taylor Powell Manager, to Lucky Labrador, Inc., DBA Taylor Powell Manager, 545 Route 28, Harwich.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We've, uh, the, the license has been, uh, completed then, so congratulations again.
Mr. Chairman, the certification documents coming around, if you could all sign that.
Okay. And, Michael, you wish to open another public hearing?
Yeah, I move that we open a public hearing for discussion and possible vote to approve a new liquor license application for Section 15 Annual Wine and Malt License to Pizza Shark Partners, DBA Pizza Shark, 403 Pleasant Lake Ave.
Hearing's been opened then. Joe, I'll turn it to you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You'll see in your packet that you have, um, an application for this new license to be done at the, um, site known as the Pleasant Lake General Store. It's been vetted by staff, and there are no objections to the issuance of this license if the board so chooses.
Say a comment?
If there's nobody...
Is there any, uh, anyone from the audience here to, uh, to comment?
So I move that we close the public hearing and return to open session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I entertain a motion.
Before, before the motion, um, going back a couple of years when we were, uh, looking at doing a project, road project on Route 124, um, which we subsequently didn't do, we did very extensive survey, uh, of the area, uh, and neighboring properties to determine right-of-way, um, et cetera. Um, one of, one of the interesting things that, uh, we found out is that, uh, the building of, all of the building of the Pleasant, uh, Pleasant, what we call Pleasant Lake General Store, not all of it is on the property that's owned by the property. A portion of the building is on property owned by the state, the state of Massachusetts, uh, the, the property that they took, they bought from the railway for the bike trail. And it's always been a question of mine, is whether we could legitimately issue a license that covered that area. Um, and I don't know what, uh, how, how one would ask that question, but I think it should probably be asked and answered at some point, and possibly before we issue a license.
Now, Michael?
I hear what Ed's saying, but I, I am going to make a motion to approve and proceed how we have in the past however many years. Uh, and if the state wants their building back, then that's a fight between them and, and Go, uh, and the pizza place.
Yeah.
So I move that we approve the new liquor license application for a Section 15 Annual Wine and Malt License, Pizza Shark Partners, DBA Pizza Shark, 403 Pleasant Lake Ave, Harwich.
Second.
Second. Uh, any other discussion? I guess, uh, Ed will then fight it out if that comes into that.
They'll fight it out. You know, the, the other issue I have is, um, all of the parking there is on property owned by the state, and, and they have had cars towed off of it, feeling, past operators feeling that it's their private parking lot, and it's, and, you know, that, that's, that's always been problematic, too.
Yeah. But we do have a motion in a second. Okay, uh, did we close the public hearing? We haven't.
Yes, we did.
I'm losing my mind, I guess. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
You abstain?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. Move the consent agenda?
Yeah, I move that we, uh, vote to approve the consent agenda as follows.
My, uh, Don, you wish to, uh, let me, uh, Michael, that's...
Yeah, I just had mentioned to you before the meeting, there's, they're not really big changes, but if you, if you're making the approval of the minutes on 518, during the selectman's report, is on the last page, page 17 of the minutes, uh, it's real confusing unless you understand that I was speaking as the chair of the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust, not as a selectman. Uh, if you read the section, you'll understand what I'm saying. It's, it's indecipherable unless you add that. Um, in the 526 meetings, uh, minute, uh, minutes on page eight, uh, I believe Mr. Ford used the word onus, meaning responsibility, and it translated into oneness, O-W-N-E-S-S. It's a scribbler's error, but it's O-N-U-S. It's a burden, or responsibility. So those are the only two changes. One's on page eight of 526, and one's on, uh, page 17 of 518.
Can we approve these, we continue that change?
So I move that we approve the consent agenda. A, minutes for approval, May 18th, 2020, with changes proposed by Selectman Howell, and May 26th, 2020, with changes proposed by Selectman Howell. Uh, May 27th, 2020, as, as written, vote to approve the list of Harwich Republican, Republican election workers for one year beginning September 1st, 2020, as listed in the packet. And C, vote to approve the list of Harwich Democratic election workers for one year beginning September 1st, 2020, as listed in the packet.
Second.
Other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to new business, uh, we have a discussion and possible vote of Caleb Chase trustees.
I know Paul Don was on to talk about this, but I was going to make a motion, I guess we could get into this discussion if Paul, uh, or Paul's on now.
Why don't we give Paul a chance of...
Yep.
Uh, Paul, I know you sent a lengthy email, but, uh, possibly you could summarize that in a few statements, and...
(laughing)
So, we can, we can...
I'd be happy to, yeah.
There he is.
Let's see, do you need a picture on here or not?
I don't.
Yeah, there we go.
Oh, there you go.
There he is.
Yeah, we, we got a nice picture of your chest.
Ah, perfect. How about now?
There you go.
Um, at the July meeting of the Caleb Chase trustees, it was, uh, and following some conversations that I had with, um, both Carol and the town accountant's office, and Emily Mitchell, Counsel on Aging, um, who administered kind of the interview part of this process. Um, it was, uh, decided by the trustees that we needed to take some action, uh, somewhat expeditiously in light of the COVID problem continuing. And, uh, as a result, the trustees went ahead and approved, uh, some, like, policy changes that we had, uh, put into effect last year. Uh, and the three changes basically were to increase the annual, uh, the, the allowed grant amount from 800 to $1,000, to include internet, uh, among the permitted, uh, expenses that were authorized. Um, previously, we had thought about that, uh, a year or so ago, but decided that, uh, internet was kind of, uh, somewhat optional. Uh, people could go to the library or whatever. Now, of course, all of that is not the case, and the internet has become even more important during this pandemic period. So, uh, it was agreed to, uh, include, uh, expenses related to internet. And then also, uh, I guess the most significant change was, uh, to allow people to actually return for assistance, uh, more frequently than once every three years, which we had increased the, uh, frequency of grants from a lifetime, a year ago, to every third year they would be eligible. But during this period, uh, we feel as though, uh, people are under even more economic stress, and, uh, the need to, um, allow more, for more frequent distributions. Um, the Council on Aging understood that, and, and my correspondence with them clarifying all of this, or with the board's correspondence clarifying all of this, that they should continue to exercise their discretion in terms of qualifications, so that people are not, uh, abusing, uh, this, um, additional flexibility. And, um, we wanted also make it clear that, uh, this would be in effect only until the end of the fiscal year that we're currently in, or if we determine that, uh, we should, uh, resort, revert back, or resort back to the, uh, policies that we, uh, put into effect a year ago. So, um, we took that action and thought it should be implemented.
Nope, we lost them.
Uh, Paul, we've lost you momentarily.
And immediately, uh, I don't, I can't sit here and say that, as a result of this act, actually not being taken, but, um, at least they have the ability to, uh, extend those additional flexible grant provisions. So that was the situation. Um, then I informed the selectmen of your board about this, uh, and some correspondence, and then it was requested that, um, we further seek, uh, an explanation as to why the trustees, I guess, were acting, uh, what appeared to be maybe in some people's view somewhat independently, but I can assure you that that's not, uh... ... of people who are, uh, in legitimate need of assistance of... are in legitimate need of assistance from getting that assistance.
Thank you, Paul.
Well, I'd be free-
Paul, I think we've, we appreciate your trustees trying to help people in need of this pandemic on a temporary basis. So with that, I entertain a motion. Michael?
I move to approve the Caleb Chase trustees' revision to policy as a result of COVID-19 financial hardships as presented.
Second.
Second, okay. Any other discussion? Ed?
Well, just a question, presumably this will, this will probably increase the request to the fund. How is the fund doing generally?
Well, in terms of available funds, we are in very good shape in terms of cash that's available through the town accounts to meet, I think, any near-term expenses or requests. We have also increased the cash commitment in the portfolio itself beyond what we normally carry. We usually try to keep it pretty fully invested. We have a little larger-than-normal amount of cash reserves. I don't anticipate that we would need to cut into any of the invested principal at this point. We have about $15,000 in cash in our accounts, and then Carol has, I think, about an additional $8,000 or $9,000 in the town accounts. We just provided a, well, not just, but back in the spring, provided $7,000 as she requested. So there's, you know, $25,000 or so thousand dollars, I would say, available to meet any heightened demand. And of course, we could tap into invested principal if need be, but I don't anticipate that to be the case. But we have asked that Carol and or Emily kind of keep us advised. If it seems as though there's a heightened rush for applicants and so forth that might demand additional cash, then we want to just be able to be prepared to meet that. The fund itself has pretty much fully recovered from the financial dip there in March, and today its principal is a little over half a million dollars, which is what it had kind of approached. It's actually been slightly higher than that at the beginning of this year, but it's, it's nearly back to that $500,000 or so.
We have a, thank you, Paul. We, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Paul, for your work on this.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Sleep well.
Moving to B, I think this is straightforward. I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the change of manager from a seasonal all alcohol liquor license from Michael J. Sick to Michael Strangfeld, 554 Street Bar, DBA Three Monkeys, 554 Route 28, Harwich Port.
Second.
Any other discussion? Joe, any comments?
Staff recommends.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Michael, you seem to be on a roll here.
Yeah. I move that we vote to approve or to designate the interim town administrator as hearing officer for a hearing to be held relative to the Alcohol Beverages and Control Commission, ABCC, alleged violations regarding the Phase II sector specific safety standards at the Port Restaurant and Bar, Inc., 541 Route 28, Harwich Port, during COVID-19 restrictions.
Second.
Second. Joe, again, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, not relative to the facts as alleged by the ABCC, but in anticipation of this, and the board may recall, there was a prior alleged violation of COVID-19 for that establishment. Working with council on the expectation that the board would remander to me, this item will be commingled, and that will be handled on August 12.
Okay.
So we hope to be able to continue the progress on these hearings.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don, did you want to?
For the next one, yeah. I'd like to motion we appoint Deborah Samantha, the registrar's, with a three-year term to expire June 30, 2023.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Any comments?
I just don't.
Yeah, could I just, could the board get a little background and the public get a little background? There's no name in the, and was there an interview? Who picked this person? Little background?
It, it doesn't work like that. The, the political town committee designates a range of choices from which the board of selectmen pick.
So you got, so this, you made this off of a list. You got that off of a list?
List. I've worked with her. She worked at Cape Cod Five. She's well-known to Anita.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, she's, I agree. She's well-known town, a lot of activities, so. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Don, you want to move on to the next one of the committee reappointments?
Sure. We held last week some interviews, and I'm trying to, oh.
We're skipping over the reappointments.
Yeah, yes. And we'd like to bring forward Paul White to serve on the golf committee, a term that will end-
30, 23.
6/30, 23.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Joe, you have a-
When you're done with the vote, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ed, you want to handle the next one as well?
And then we're proposing to the board appoint Bernadette West to the cultural council, again, for a term to expire on 6/30, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I think we skipped over reappointments, but there's, there's mistake in that, that we need to bring that back next Monday.
So is it-
It expires before we actually renew them.
Joe?
Is that a motion at table or just?
Motion at ta, I don't think we need a table. We can bring it back Monday.
You'd have to vote to take it off the table, then. It's just-
We'll just-
Skip over it and correct it and bring it back.
Michael?
I'm just going to make the next motion if you're ready.
I'm ready.
I move that we approve the boundary line agreement between the town of Harwich and William J. Vigiano, owner of 70 Willow Street, Harwich.
Is there a second?
Second.
This has been on, going for some time, and it just got stalled for whatever reason. So we were, we, this is sort of tying up a loose end. No discussion at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you, Joe, for, for taking care of this. Moving on to the town administrator's report.
So as you'll see in the packet, hopefully you have in the packet, there is a hire to be made for the position of custodian, as you may recall. The position's been vacant due to a somewhat surprise resignation or retirement right before COVID. It's budgeted, it's necessary under all that needs to get done, and I'm recommending that Robin Smith be, or I've, I've recommended, or I don't know how to say this, I've hired Robin Smith-
And you're asking for our confirmation.
... within 14 days. There we go. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Any Selectman's report? I'll start with Michael. You have a-
Just a question on the custodian. Can you just explain that again? That's custodian that works in the team of custodians?
Correct. It's one of the five custodian positions that we've had. There was a vacancy. We were trying to, when Link advertised, we were trying to see how many responses we could get. They had two great people. We anticipated possibility of hiring the second person under CARES Act. Because of the urgent need for custodians, that fell through for a number of reasons. But I'm recommending, or I've hired Ms. Smith on the expectation that the board would approve it over 14 days to fill an existing vacancy because it's a critical need.
And just to follow up, if we could, I know we've talked about the dispatcher position, and I, and I did, I have asked for a couple of times the amount that we're spending on overtime versus the cost of hiring a dispatcher, because I believe the board needs to take that up sooner than late.
Okay. Correct. Moving on to the Selectman's report. Don, I'll start with you.
Well, we're- County, and we think we have peace in our time. The real crux of this is we'd rather get it right because these regulations that we're promulgating from the Subcommittee, which I'm vice chair, we can't, we need to get them unanimous because it's really going to be the basis upon which we disperse all funds that go through. We were hoping to be able to get more projects involved, but that would have been a nightmare in bookkeeping because we'd only be giving progress payments each year, rather than making a commitment for the entire project. There was some thought about making commitment to higher projects, but then we'd only wind up being able to fund one or two of those, and everybody else would wind up just sitting there waiting for money. So we, I'll let you know what we vote on tomorrow, but I think we're actually going to be able to get to the management board level and finally start looking at projects.
Don, do they have any idea of how much money's been in there?
No, and that's, I mean, they're in the same circumstance that we, our DOR really-
Don't separate them out.
You can't separate them out. That's the problem with the, with this, is if you start identifying where they come from, everybody, the potential exists that all 15 towns decide to go their own way and keep their own money, in which point there's no way to fund bigger projects, and there's no real reason to even have the board.
Joe, you're-
Just passing over, this is the boundary line agreement.
Okay.
The board voted for signature.
Thank you, Don. Ed?
Nope.
Michael?
No.
Steve?
I'm good, thanks.
I think I only have one comment, and I was going to make it when Megan was on the line, but I thought Superintendent Carpenter sent this post around, asking people to be very cautious about safety during the pandemic, because I think the school has come up with a very, I'm impressed with their plan of opening this in September, but that, that plan, keeping the COVID-19 in check. So I'm hoping everyone reads that and pays attention to it.
Where was that sent?
It was on their, I think it's on their school website, and I, who's their question? Shows up on my town from, not him, but from their public relations, wherever it is. Well, there you go.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.